All your valuables out of sight and lock your cars. Well, it may seem like we're perfectly safe and licensed and people will still find scale opportunities. They're not going to smash into your window, smash your window, but that happens.
And there's a woman who still keeps their car keys in the car. The grabber had been in this car the first time and he still keeps the keys in the car. I think he wants money to take them out.
I hope you lost like a super junky car and wouldn't unlock the keys in and nobody else.
For all the meeting to order, wanted to read as I normally do. Public comments are always welcome and I invite you to sign up if you wish to speak tonight. I'll recognize those signed up during the citizens remarks section of the council's agenda. Citizens who wish to speak to council but would like to sign up in advance may be permitted to address the council during citizens remarks and comments agenda. But only at the discretion of the mayor. When speaking to the city council at the following guidelines be followed. Once recognized to speak, please step forward. We'll put you on the purple square or the yellow square of your choice. And for the record, state your name and if you're a resident of Lexington, Virginia, Virginia. If you want to be contacted after this meeting, please provide your contact information. Please make your comments to the council as a whole and do not include the audience. Please be brief, state your position and provide facts. Please provide written statements and or supporting materials to the clerk for distribution to the council and city manager. Debate is prohibited if there's a time for you to share your thoughts and ideas with your city council. And lastly, please speak clearly at the moment to hear what you have to say. Each speaker has a lot of three minutes and individuals may not know there are a lot of times to another person. If you represent a group, five minutes are allotted and you are invited to identify other members of your group who are in the panel. The council or mayor may allow exceptions to these guidelines at your discretion. I remind us all that meetings in Lexington from the council are formal proceedings and are reported. And with that, I would like to call the meeting to order. And the first item of the business, you can all please, uh, for me to stand and pledge allegiance. You're even welcome. Uh, next item on the agenda, in this consideration of the agenda. And I would like to add under presentation, um, five point three. Or actually, uh, we'll make, uh, the, the kickoff committee of minutes in history from Eric Wilson. Chair some events about upcoming July fourth, tenth, uh, holiday. And also wanted to take a point of, uh, With that addition to the agenda, are there any other items to come before us? And unless there's an objection, we will approve the agenda with that addition. Um, and before we go to the presentations and have Eric come up, um, just wanted to acknowledge the passing of the local legend of, uh, G. Otis Mead the third. We could speak for hours and have a killing on Saturday at eleven o'clock when his funeral takes place at Oprah Cemetery. There will be a lot of, uh, tears of sadness and joy, uh, shared with, um, along with lots of stories and Otisisms. That have been so lithe during the past week, but, um, I would ask that we take a moment of silence. Uh, to remember Otis and his dedication and commitment to our community. Thank you very much. For the way through, we said, I'll see you when I see you. Uh, Eric Wilson, please step forward.
Where to do this? Good to see you. Yes, we are in the heart of the civic season from, you know, pink up to July fourth. And, uh, from the food festival, we live at Rockbridge. There's a good annual tradition that we all know. Um, I've spoken before and, uh, Nick Betts is on the VA two, the Rockwood Initiative 250 committee about how those kinds of things will broaden and expand in the coming year. Uh, and the three years ahead is this project to commemorate local and national revolutionary histories, not just of the seventies and seventies, but revolutionary ideas and experiences really into the twenty first. Uh, we continue to count on, uh, lots of local input, uh, on that. We have been hearing, uh, ideas from churches, schools, organizations that they want to contribute to that. On July eleventh, Chamber of Commerce is doing its first Fridays, uh, series. Cheryl Wagner and I will be presenting about, uh, opportunities to do that. And, uh, the organizations that you all are tied to in lots of different ways may have more ways to connect, uh, with these kinds of engagements, experiences than we think. So to do that, I just want here to note, uh, I hope you've seen in the paper, we started a new series called Revolutionary Moments. Uh, it won't be a weekly series. We're starting off that way to get some momentum. But over the next several years, looking back to touchstones in history, many of them, you know, in the revolutionary decade of the seventies and seventies and seventies to think about. How, when we look at that in both a national and local light, uh, we may see some different things that we thought about the founders or what the aims and goals were. I asked the mayor about, uh, coming this week because it was what? It was Wednesday, Wednesday, twenty fifth, Wednesday, twenty fifth. Uh, that was the day seventeen, uh, eighty eight, the Virginia ratified constitution. It's not a date that's on everybody's day. Maybe we remember that the US Constitution was ratified or whatever. Um, and so the date isn't the important thing. It's an opportunity to catch attention. What was interesting was to think about how government gets done, you all, you all the time. Uh, the layers that that takes and the disagreements at the, at the local level. Um, you know, it's well known that Patrick Henry was for one thing with Mason for another. How divided those figures were, was striking. Henry did not want we the people. Henry wanted we the states. Other people wanted we the people. That had to be fought out. The Virginia vote was way closer than I realized. It was eighty nine to seventy nine. That's a, that's a five vote swing. Washington later claimed, and we don't usually think of Washington as, um, as, as a whip, right? Going around getting the votes. So he claimed he swung five people. That would be convenient Batman. I don't know. But, um, the, the specific Lexington time, looking at, looking at our downtown streets, looking at the first grid seventeen seventy eight. I'd always thought, yep, these are founders names. They're not names from nineteenth century. That makes sense. But actually a decade later to look at, you've got Washington here, Henry and Nelson, opposed sides. Randolph and Jefferson, very different positions one decade later in the founding of that revolutionary. And I have me thinking, okay, here we are in twenty twenty five. Where, where were we as a city, as a council, as a city government in twenty fifteen? What's changed, right? How does that look? Uh, and that's not a lead in question. It's just that when we all know some global, and looking forward, you know, what might things look like in twenty thirty five? Kind of yeah. So looking at these things can help us see, yes, you know, where the states lie and how they shift. Um, but I do hope that this series and the work that will be done in churches and, you know, parades and all, all sorts of things, school projects in the years ahead. Um, we'll keep that local element in mind, Lexington and Rockbridge and being a very strong on that and making sure that, that history is out of it. And committed and we certainly appreciate your leadership as a government and, and others and, and keeping that at the forefront. So we'll see on the third, the fourth, the fifth, um, and next year as well. Thanks.
Thank you for being with us and, uh, give, give, give us a good perspective and, uh, remind us of our histories and, uh, where, where we travel and, uh, look forward to the journey ahead.
Next week you get to hear about George Washington, the loser.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Uh, the VA two fifty will be, uh, a, a marathon, not a sprint. So, um, lots, lots of opportunities, um, and starts, starts today, if you will. Um, next I'd like to call on the sister cities exploratory committee and invite Natalie to address council. Uh, glad you're here and, uh, we're eager to, to listen.
Hello. Um, my name is Natalie Alexision. I live on Jordan Street and I've been there for about thirteen years. Um, golly. I don't know what point I become a true Lexingtonian and I don't know if I'm there yet, but, um, when I first moved here, it was, you know, I'm from above, um, north of the Mason Dixon line. So just different. It was just very different. I grew up in Chicago suburbs, which is very different. However, it didn't remind me of my home. I was born in Ukraine in a little town in head mountains. And that was actually something that really struck me every time I would turn to go to Kroger. Mountains were there and I was like, oh, hello. Took me a few years to get our rest surprise. If you've ever been in Chicago is. Yeah. Um, okay. So, uh, just a little bit about my own background. When I was in elementary school and junior high school and high school, our, uh, suburb of Chicago had a partner city with a city in France. And so I just remember as a kid going through school and learning about maybe a song from this town in France. We learned about the Sev Porcelan that was made in that town. And it was just another element that I'm almost forty. I still remember that and it was a very enriching experience. And I did say that I'm from Ukraine and I'm Ukrainian and I was lucky enough to be brought up in a very rich cultural community in the diaspora in the Chicago area. So I had Ukrainian school on Saturday, Ukrainian church on Sunday, Ukrainian dancing Monday after evenings. It was, um, very embedded. Um, and so it was never, one was better than the other. It was, I was all of these things. And I feel like now I'm also Lexi, from Lexington, also from Virginia and all of that history. And it was just a really, I think it made me a better person. And I study art history. I'm an art historian. I teach, um, um, Gateway, I've also taught at BMI, um, and at SVU. And learning about different cultures and the histories, I think only helps to develop empathy for other cultures and to create a better world, dare I say. So, um, I was very much into sister cities and Chuck, bless his heart. Um, I, I massaged him like, like a good piece of kale with oil once in a while, like, hey, there's a sister city program. Do you know? And, and that happened over quite a few years. Frank, bless your heart. I pinned you at the buffet table at the group party. Um, just to kind of feel the lay of the land, but I knew from the beginning that it couldn't be a Natalie project. It had to be a community project. Um, and so when Dan Glosski was, um,
Pizoni.
Pizoni, I'm so sorry. Pizoni was walking around and he actually knocked on our door. He was like, I'm concerned about Ukraine and all this happening. Would you like to be on our list and get together? I'm like, sure. And we, we talked about different things we could do. And this was of course after, um, the hosting Ukrainian families that happened three, four years ago. Um, so we met and it was something that everyone seemed to like the idea of. And it's not a political or a knee jerk reaction to anything that's happening. Of course, Ukraine finds itself in a very difficult position now, um, in terms of history and geopolitical conflicts. But I think that a good sister city project is more than just pairing with someone because they have the same name. Or one element of this guy was born there, et cetera. Um, so Fred from Fred.
Blanton.
Blanton, thank you. He's on the board, the national board, and he's also the Virginia representative. Um, he came into town and we had a roundtable discussion yesterday in the Piovano room at the library. And he was, and he's like, what do you want to talk about? And of course we had a big list, but I said, I want to also talk about and understand the difference between successful programs and failing programs. The ones that don't make it off, the ones that are just signed pieces of paper and then a placard somewhere in town and nothing else. Why does that happen? And so that's what he identified is that there's just this one idea, whether it's a name or geographic location or one fun fact that brings these two cities. But it's not a community rooted support and investment. And so I think that if we do this right, the Lexington community could really benefit for it, from it. Um, something that Fred did point out was that when you become a member of sister cities, every single member of the community is a sister city member. Um, which I think is a little bit inspiring to have that global outlook. And there could be multiple cities paired with in the future. Um, we're looking at Ukraine now because of the community here that is interested in that. But certainly we can, this is an exploratory committee. So part of it is doing the due diligence of finding the good partnership and pairing based on multiple layers and different parts of the community. And again, I just want to stress that this isn't, um, the sister city program was begun by Eisenhower back in the fifties. Um, post World War Two reconstruction and bridge building between people. And he said, I think if, if it must be, people must leap over government to gather together and build these bridges. And I think that's a very inspiring idea. Um, but I think it also brings into the question of identity and people coming together in the community to determine what it is about us that is unique to us and how do we want to present ourselves to others, to other communities and teach their children. And I think that would give a really good opportunity for community building and belonging in a way that I think maybe other programs don't quite hit. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation, Don.
I might add just a few words. Um, I think I know all of you, most of you anyway. Um, what, what, what you might not, not know of me is that, uh, uh, I made my original career in Eastern Europe, Soviet Union, Russia. Uh, went behind the Iron Curtain in the summer of nineteen seventy one into Prague. And boy, that opened my eye, what the Soviet Union had done to that country and the other countries in the area. Um, so I got really excited, uh, when Natalie called a small group together. And one of the, one of the ideas was a sister city program. And I said, hey, boy, I want to be involved in that. And, uh, as she mentioned, we met with Fred Glanton, uh, last night. And, uh, had no idea the number of cities in the state of Virginia that have sister cities program. Uh, San, where he's from, uh, Roanoke, I think has six. Um, we don't have any, and this is a great opportunity to get on the map and get involved with Ukraine. It needs a lot of help right now. And, uh, we're not talking about military help. What we're talking about civilian help. And, uh, um, uh, once, once we get approval from the city, we'll start exploring that cities to, to involve. And, uh, there are a number already that have indicated in, in interest in developing a sister city program with a city in the United States. Uh, so we'll go from there. And, uh, and I would hope there would be a city that had a university or at least an academy of higher learning. Uh, so that we could get, uh, Marshall Lee and BMI involved. I think that would be really important in, in an art city to get our, uh, art people involved. Uh, may, maybe get culinary people involved, exchange menus and, and have a one night downtown with a Ukrainian menu. Maybe we can get George Uji to reopen the southern end. But, but there are a lot of things that we can do. Um, uh, but to do it, we gotta be working not only with the city, uh, but our citizens in, in town. And I think there will be an excitement. Uh, it'll, it'll be something to look forward to and something that involves people, myself included. So thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any other speakers with a group? The presentation from the council have any questions or observations?
What, what is being asked of the city?
So I think, um, should be considered formal to To look into and, and formalize a formal sister city relationship. So once the initial research is done, to maybe have another meeting. So it could be a roundtable discussion of which fits best. Um, and then the approval from the mayor, as I understand it, the signing of the magic pen. Uh, the wills these things into being, and there is a fee um, for the size of Lexington, the population is three hundred and ten dollars. And if the city budget is. We can do it on our own. Um, but we would certainly appreciate any support on your behalf. And also further down the road, we can discuss some what. Ways you would like to look at developing relationships and what amount of effort you want to put in. Or if you would just like this to be more of a half talk committee of community members. So we're not expecting.
Much staff time or?
No.
I, I don't think we should, I mean, I think we could revisit this topic after we hear from the city manager who's thoughts about it. Obviously, we were approached previously by East of Ghana and we had multiple meetings about being a sister city. About a year and a half ago, uh, and they visited Lexington and the mayor participated in that visit, BMI and every now did. And then Doug Harwood will point out that we already do have a sister city. Um, but we must not be a ver- a good sister, uh, because we know what it even thinks about it, but I believe it's uh. A country, I mean, a city in France or Germany that we.
I think that's.
It must, but he always reminds me, he's like, David, you already have a sister city, but anyway. Um, but I just would love to hear from the city manager, then we can revisit this topic. Because I don't think our council should stand in the way of citizens that want to do something that benefits Lexington. And so we ultimately, yeah.
This, this isn't something that's been on our uh, business plan, like you all for, for the city, directing the city manager. And um, I'll, I'll see to uh, piggyback the, the comments just made. Uh, I think there were some ceremonial sister city relationships. Uh, established in the past, which may have been a letter and mayors visiting each other or something of that nature, but. The formal sister city program that you speak of. Um, I, I know that Charlottesville has a very robust, well-funded program. Um, we don't have anything budgeted for this. Three hundred and ten dollars is not insurmountable. Um, and I think uh, from Leslie's question, if you all can figure out what it is you want to accomplish, that's really. Uh, the, you know, the role that uh, what we like to consider. Working to the city manager, I know I've already met with this uh exploratory committee. Uh, but as you progress and figure out what it is you want to do and what role the city will play. Um, if it's um, signing a document and empowering. Other citizens in the city of Lexington to participate. Um, I would uh, just, I would hope that we could support that. Um, if it's staff time, I mean Charlottesville, it seems like they have several hundred thousand dollars. Multiple employees and we, we just don't have the critical mass for that.
And I definitely understand and just to. Confirm, that's not what we're going to do. We're not Charlotte, so we're Lexington and that's okay. Um, I don't anticipate a lot of staff time and I think. That this is where the success of the program would flourish, is if there were different organizations like W N, like. BMI, so for example, we were talking yesterday over dinner and perhaps getting someone who is. In the midst of all the drone warfare to come visit and teach a class at BMI. It would be very much in that sphere of sharing knowledge and exchanges. Um. And benefiting both sides. Um, and perhaps having to that spare or, or developing business uh relationships or. Uh, like Don mentioned, having maybe one item on the menu for all the restaurants downtown Lexington to have.
Yeah, and, and those things you certainly don't need our blessing to accomplish. Uh, and we certainly support, there's none of us generating this meal and someone to sit down quite a bit, so we.
Well, I think that it would go a lot further with, with city council support.
Sure.
Um, so that, from that perspective, I think that would give it a little bit more promise.
Do you all have any specifics to even bond yet, or is that something you're still?
So we're so, we're really trying to do the good work of good research. And we do hope to talk to people on the ground there. And I, from what I understand, um, previous conversations with other sister city component partnerships. Um, seem to be off in scale. Um, in terms of the different cities, so we're looking for more or less. Same thing, the difference. As they say.
Yes.
Um, so many similarities to bring the two cities together, but differences so we can.
And um, thank you so much for bringing this forward and for the exploratory committee, the work that you all are doing. Um, I, I mean, personally, you laid in that Lexington is part of the fabric of uh Natalie uh along with Ukraine and Chicago. Um, and uh, look forward to understanding and working uh through the city manager to understand which roles. Uh, goals and objectives as you nail them down and what you really want to accomplish. And how we can partner with you to accomplish that in future opportunities.
Thanks.
Keep, keep us posted. Um, next item on the agenda is the fiscal year twenty twenty-five second quarter financial report. Call the city manager to take it away.
Mayor, uh, Jen, Jennifer Bell's at a training class uh today and tomorrow in Charlottesville, so. Um, she offered to come over and I encouraged her to not do so, save the gas and uh. Allow me to present what is a, a standard routine third quarter financial report. Uh, I will say she wanted to make sure before the fiscal year ends on Monday, she wanted to make sure that we had the third quarter in front of, in front of council. Uh, generally speaking, things are moving on track, both on revenues, expenditures. Uh, there are two exceptions on the revenue side that, that are called out uh in, in this memo and some other documents that we provided council. Uh, the first, as you know, we've been tracking sales tax has been falling behind what's budgeted. Uh, throughout the year and that trend continues and Jen is now forecasting that we'll miss our budgeted revenue. Uh, what was a bit surprising, uh, which we only learned on June fifth is the property tax collections. Well, still excellent, uh, ninety-eight percent of the budget. Uh, we missed our property tax collections by about a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So that's. Those are two trends that are concerning and warrant careful monitoring and watching. Uh, we're going to be digging into the data on what happened with property tax. The first half collections. Were bang on, you know, they gave no indication that, that we had any kind of problems or. Some taxpayers must not have paid, they paid first half. And we need to dig into the, into the data to figure out what's going on. Um, it's typical that you, you're going to have some taxpayers who missed the date. Uh, and, and, and that's usually under one percent. Uh, it's also possible that some are in transition in terms of a property sale or something like that. So we need to get into the data to figure out. Uh, what's going on. Um. All of that said, uh, the balance of revenues, including the negatives on the sales tax and property tax, we're still projecting an operating surplus. Um, I think we had shared with council in January that we, Jennifer and I were projecting anywhere from half a million to six hundred thousand dollars savings. We think it's going to, a, a surplus, we think it's going to be less than that. Uh, but it's, it's still going to be very high, there's probably several hundred thousand dollars. So just a couple of storm clouds that we, that weren't watching. Um, and, and as Jen mentioned in, in her report, um, we're seeing more Virginia public assistance programs uh stepping forward. Uh, as well as Children's Service CSA Act, um, expenditures and we don't really control those, those are entitlements that people. Uh, pursue and are eligible for, but what we're seeing there is an early harbinger that there's greater need out there. Um, so that, that warrants careful watching. Uh, in terms of expenditures, they're all generally in line. Um, we did finally get our uh, street sweeper in May, which was a, a long time coming, so. Uh, generally speaking, as we finish the third quarter and look back on it and as we approach the end of the fiscal year. Generally, things are on track for a, a solid end to the fiscal year. If I can answer any questions that are difficult, I'll ask, I'll prefer them to Jen's.
Yeah, do you think that the uh, missed property taxes could have anything to do with city home new locations? Do you think that's possible?
It is possible. I, I have no reason to think that, but, but I, I couldn't rule it out. I wouldn't have any reason to rule it out. Um, again, we had ninety-eight percent collections. Um, we continue to have people who will walk into five thirty-nine Nelson and, and say. Why are you here? Uh, and where is the, the red star's office or the treasurer's office? And that, that continues even three months after the move, the temporary move. So it's a, it's a good theory, it's possible.
I know that Jen and you and, and commissioner of revenue will do actual research, but just to clarify, when we talk about real estate or property. It's personal property, so it's the car tax and real estate. So it, we're, we're missing on both. And so I, I will kind of be interested to hear of that hundred and sixty-three, is it? Real estate or is it personal property? And, you know, I'm, I'm continued to be um, anecdotally be, be struck. By the number of homes that of course are selling for thirty, forty percent over for assessed value. Um. But they're actually a lot of people's second homes. And so where we are, um, it's, it's just the way that it is as boomers have all the wealth. And so a lot are moving here. Um, and maybe their cars, maybe, maybe that house used to have a family that had two or three cars. Because they lived in Lexington and now that family is moving here or they're not permanent residents. And they live here when they want to, to see grandkids or kids. And their cars are registered somewhere else. So I, I just look, I just see more and more out of state license plates. Where I previously saw Virginia license plates. And so I just will be intrigued by what staff finds out about that. And if we can make any, you know, what we need to do in the future to not miss that, because, you know, we. That's a, that's a hard one to uh, hard one to swallow. And then I would also just clarify, um. For everyone that's here, a huge crowd, um, you know, something that we've talked about when we miss sales tax. Um, we think about retail, we think about products and so forth, but we also, it's, it's. Uh, meals that are sold because a huge component of a sold meal is that, that tax is not just all. Ten percent meals tax, it's still the sales tax and the meals tax is on top of it. So when we have restaurants closing, that actually hits your sales tax worse than your meals tax. We all think of it as meals tax, but it's a bigger, there's a bigger percentage of, of taxes collected that is sales. Uh, on a, on a meal that we might buy a Subway, a KFC, a Southern Inn. Um, and so I just kind of point that out, um, because it's not necessarily a closing of grand home furnishings. It could be a closing more of, of restaurants that are hurting our sales tax in addition to our meals tax. But um, again, I look forward to all the work Jen's going to do and, and Karen, as we, we are concerned about that.
Look, it'd be interesting to see because our sales tax actually since January is doing very well, doing better than last, the last. Couple of years, so it has picked up again since each January. And really a property tax that looks like a big number, but it's less than one percent of our budget and that's a bigger.
But we, but, but actually, if you look at, we've always collected more in real estate property tax than budget. We've actually been on a, we've actually been struggling on personal property, if you actually peel the layer of the onion back. Uh, for a while, because we've been trying to thread the needle on our pro- personal property tax relief rate. Uh, and, and I, and so again, I, I know that you all would do it. I'm not going to try to be a con artist here, but. I've been looking at quarterly financials now for too long and so I, and I, and I look at our property tax uh collections and. I think we could see that personal property tax coming, but I think there's something else going on. But the, the, the drawn candidates are going to solve that for.
That's right.
Initiate elimination of the property. Well, and, and, and truthfully, as we talked about a couple of other areas that are. Not causes for concern, which our citizens might provide the, the services that we need to. So I mean, that's uh key, but when you. Uh, when you just do research about the Children's Services Act or the Virginia Public Assistance. Yes, it's state, it's a state program, it's a state funded program, but they also get federal money. And of course, a lot of federal money is coin flip right now, whether it's going to continue or, or not continue, I, I think it. Not a coin flip, it's probably, but um, but that's something also to think about. Because I mean, you can't open up a newspaper or something and not see. That municipalities need to be planning for that. So um, just as we, as we move forward, trust that you'll be tracking that.
We'll be trying, we'll be trying to tease out, I mean, it, it's interesting that lodging tax and meals tax as revenue sources standalone. Are actually projected to exceed budget, uh, and that helps offset the property and sales tax. But there's, there's just a lot of sort of chaos and moving variables within the economic data. Uh, and we're trying to track, as, as you point out, uh, potential changes in federal legislation. What the big budget bill means and all that kind of stuff. So we're trying to be mindful of all that. Uh, we're trying to be, as we enter the new fiscal year. Mindful that we, we may well be going into a budget tightening mode. Uh, and that we're looking for having early indicators that we need to do that. Through tracking the data monthly and then using that to forecast. It's not, it's not even so much important whether we. In, in July's first month, when we get our first month's data. That we might be only two thousand dollars less than previous July, that could. Be a harbinger of some much more significant problem in terms of our forecasts and that's the tools that we're coming from.
I don't know what you mentioned there too. I mean, if you look at the lot index, the lot index for FY twenty-five is under, um. Well, the last few months it's under FY twenty-four, so. Maybe some forthcoming issues.
You talked about the uptick in junior public assistance. And that might have something to do with what we're seeing in that one issue. That is, people who have property or have personal property. May not be receiving the public assistance, but there might be a trend there that they're struggling and that's one of the last bills that they. Can try to get paid.
Any other questions on the quarterly? Uh, thank you for presenting and representing Jen well, but uh, I, I know she did all the heavy lifting. Castle on Eric, appreciate you there. Perfect work. We have the public hearings, uh, next time's consideration of events from June five, I know you were. Uh, email to you, anyone have an objection to approving the minutes that were presented. Uh, they are approved. Uh, moving to the time, the citizens' remarks and comments, and again, we welcome uh, anyone who would like to speak to council and um. I didn't see if anybody signed up, but if anyone who would like to speak to council this year. Mary Ellen. On board.
Hello, I'm Mary Ellen Cook. I live at Ford North. And perhaps, um, I have two comments, I know I'm on the time. But um, perhaps, um, I do recognize when I'm traveling to Stanton. That in the welcome to Stanton sign, that it actually lists the sister city. I think they've m- mentioned Romania and there's a second city, I, I don't catch that. But maybe we miss the fact that we already have a sister city here in Lexington. Because it's never been on a public road sign. And what, if this does come to pass, go Ukraine, you know, I'm all for that. But um, I think it would help if we put it on our welcome sign. Hold each location that we have one. So, comment number one. Comment number two is I may be jumping the gun here because um. I get to my three minutes before. Everyone on council reports on their, from their special boards. And I am hoping that we, I, I do come to this for, at these meetings and. I, I like to hear, I like to hear presentations, especially from regarding. Charles Aligood's detailed.